Let's call this meeting to order. Commissioner Langley.
Our heavenly Father, once again, we do thank you for this beautiful day to give it to us. Father, we pray that your hand be upon this meeting. Father, that everything is said and done will bring honor and glory to you. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Chair Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Teresa.
And Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Commissioner Northrup.
I may move to approve the agenda as it's written.
Support.
Second.
Too late.
Too late.
Second to support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And now we're down to public comment, and this is on agenda items only, and there's a limit to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comments?
Thank you that we're finally moving forward on our carpet in our building.
All right, any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll close public comments and we'll go to H. Presentations, we have the introduction and overview of the Sheriff's Office Victim Service Unit.
So I'll give you a little history if you're not familiar with it. So prior to COVID, the end of the world, we had a very active victim services unit, which whenever we have a death or we have a major case where there's a victim that needs some help and guidance on how to go forward from where they're at. So a natural death or suicide, a car accident where someone actually passes away. Families don't deal with that every day like we do. As law enforcement, we're kind of, we go, we do our thing, goodbye. So the service unit is able to come with us. And when we say goodbye and leave to go to the next thing, they stay and they give guidance to what this unit can do for them. So with me is my operations manager, Tracy Monroe, who kind of guides the whole thing and the way it works. And I'll let her explain to you what it is we do.
Hi. Like you said, I'm Tracy Monroe. I'm the operations manager at the Cass County Sheriff's Office. I am also the victim service unit coordinator. The victim service unit, which is also referred to as advocates or V S U. We sort of use all of those names interchangeably. They play a vital role as a compassionate volunteer group who help people during some of their darkest moments. Our primary focus is providing support to victims and survivors of traumatic events like suicides, natural deaths, homicides, traffic fatalities, natural disasters, or house fires. We also assist law enforcement with death notifications. Those death notifications can come from other agencies where the families live in Cass County, and they'll call upon the Sheriff's Office and we will assist with that. During a crisis, volunteer V S U advocates provide several key services such as immediate, on-scene emotional support and comfort. We help victims separate from the scene while maintaining a link to law enforcement and assist with questions and concerns that they may have. We're basic short-term crisis intervention, so we aren't long-term. We will refer them to the long-term services. We're just sort of an immediate service. They always have contact with us if they need it, but we try to stay short-term. We help victims and survivors understand what happens next, such as funeral preparations, autopsies, the court system, and offer referrals to relevant community services. What makes this role especially meaningful is that many advocates have experienced personal tragedy themselves, and they want to help others through similar situations. They free up police and emergency personnel to focus on their investigative duties while ensuring victims aren't left alone during traumatic events. In Michigan, advocates receive 20 hours of specialized training through the Michigan Sheriff's Association, learning about grief stages, communication techniques, and victims' rights. The program has been so successful that it received a presidential citation for private sector initiatives in 1989. I would like to just introduce our team, and they'll just stand up when I say their name. So I have Shannon Jurgensen, who also works for the Sheriff's Office with us. We have Tom Langley, who most of you know. Melody Glazer, who is not here this evening. We have Sue and Roger Boyer. We have Nancy Hudson. Marcia Godisak. Deisha Kirkland, who was not able to make it this evening due to work. And Connie Ferrier. So this team has been just... And, sorry, sorry Nate, we have Pastor Nate Wilder here as well. And I guess I didn't really touch base on our chaplain group. Our chaplain group is incredible, can't say enough about them. They do a lot for us, and when we didn't have the victim service unit team up and running, they really stepped up and did all of this on their own. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Appreciate your time that you guys put into this, because you would think, yeah, they just go out and then they come back, but they could spend hours helping, so appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time. All right, and then we'll go on to Cass Family Clinic and a presentation on proposed mobile clinic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Joe Gavin, I'm the CEO of Cass Family Clinic. And I'm here to talk a little bit about our new mobile clinic, which we are going to launch here this summer. Should be taking delivery of it in the next few weeks. And I have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you. Just wait for it to pop up. And on the second slide, I'd want to start by thanking you for the funding for the Narcan vending machines. So we applied for funding through the opioid settlement fund a few months ago. Got that funding approved. We now have these Narcan vending machines in our Niles and Cassopolis locations. Once Duwodjak opens up in September, we've got the third one in storage, we'll have that available. And it's been exceptionally popular already. We went through, this unit that you're looking at holds about 150 boxes of Narcan. There's two canisters per box. We had to refill that within the first week, so it's been very popular. People are coming in, we think this is going to save lives, and we very much appreciate the funding. So moving on to the mobile clinic, services that we're going to provide, and this will be the next slide, please. Will be focused on behavioral health. Is there, am I in control, or? Oh, oh, okay. I'll just tell you, so behavioral health and substance. There's another one. We're not going to get to the best part first, here, we gotta save this for later. Yeah. It's back a couple, that's the last one. Substance use disorder, behavioral health, we know these issues are huge in this community. It's a hard-to-get-to population. Obviously, we treat folks that are in need of these services, that are clinics. But we also realize that mobile clinics tend to be a safer, more comfortable venue for folks that have either of these issues or both. So the mobile unit will be staffed with a full-time licensed master social worker and a behavioral health medical assistant. We'll find, we're right now in the process of identifying the locations that we will set up at. The key is to have routine locations and to be there predictably. We have a marketing team that will advertise when and where we're going to be. It's quite a sophisticated operation. We have a manager that's working on this. In fact, we're retaining somebody you guys know, Rick Benke, who's going to be assisting us with not only setting up the safety features of the unit, but also helping us with locations and logistics. And then additionally, this, it's a 39-foot unit. Additionally, we'll have an exam room for medical. So we'll get into the schools, we'll get into the churches. We've been dialoguing with the churches already to find out, you know, what the barriers are to coming to the clinic. Clearly, the mobile unit has inspired some enthusiasm among the parishioners. They can't wait for us to come to their events and to their churches. We think it's going to be essentially a feeder system into the clinic, so they'll get more acclimated to the healthcare system and learn more about how to access it and access it appropriately. And you can see the big reveal here. This is what the vehicle will look like. We're partnering, Corwell is also partnering with us. And this is mainly to help folks in the community understand how the healthcare spectrum works. So we provide the primary care on the front end. Corwell, they do the emergency care, the specialty care. We work hand and glove with one another, but we provide very different services. But we can't do it without one another, and we work very well together. So that's kind of our slogan right now, Partnering for Your Health. And we're hoping also that the opioid settlement fund in the county will also partner with us on this. Finally, the budget, so in your packet, the application, you'll see a larger budget, a few more years packed into it, but it's an expensive operation. And just because of the sheer nature of it, it's not very efficient. It's efficient to have patients come into our clinic, see one every 20 minutes, and it's very routine. And hopefully, they show up. We have about a 15% no-show rate, which is not too bad for a clinic like ours. And a typical provider will see 18 to 20 patients per day. On the mobile clinic, you've got travel time, it's just less predictable, so the revenue streams are less predictable. We'll be lucky to have 12 to 15 patients seen in that same amount of time. So therefore, you see some of these numbers. We know that this is the right investment for this community, so that's why we're doing this. But we're also looking for, you know, partners. So we've got the philanthropic partners. The unit itself costs about $300,000. It's not brand-new. It was already outfitted, it's a 2018 with low miles. We're going to make do with that, and if it's successful, we'll add a dental unit in the future. But again, I'm here to ask for your support and approval of the recommendation from the opioid settlement fund to help us underwrite and offset some of the costs associated with this. So finally, I just want to say thank you and appreciate the opportunity to be before this distinguished board tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
When you, when is this going to be up and running?
So we're going to roll it out during the fair season, and it should be seeing patients shortly thereafter. So mid-August into September. We're still recruiting staff, which tends to be a challenge.
I have another question.
Sure.
I have another question.
Okay.
Is this just going to be in Cass, or are you going to be part of Barren, too?
So our plan is to hit all of Cass and, you know, the hard-to-get-to areas or the places where there's medical deserts. But we'll go into lower Van Buren, and then we'll go into southeast Barren. So around the Niles area. The reason for that geographic reach is we don't want to overlap with other clinics that are similar to ours unless that we're invited into their area, but there's no need for us to overlap and expend our assets and resources in their area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grace.
Thank you. Sir, I've got several questions. You're requesting financial support.
Yes.
Now, is Barren and Van Buren also be financial support?
I have not requested any financial support from them yet.
Okay, another thing caught me in looking at your plan to lose money every year, you're in operation.
Right.
Okay. And the third question, have you contacted Woodlands out here at all and worked with them?
Yes. Yeah, we're in communications. They service a higher acuity patient than we do. So, yeah, we kind of work together as well. Referral from us to them is usually the sequence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much. Letter aye, approval of minutes, April 17th, 2025, Committee of the Whole Minutes. Have a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
And motion and support. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the minutes of April 17th, 2025 are approved. And Jay, we have financial report. Do you have anything for us today?
It's all in the packet. If there's any questions, I'm available to help answer those.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. We will, I'll entertain a motion to accept a financial report that's in the packet. Don't need it, all right. We will go on to K, unfinished business. No unfinished business. New business, there's a request for opioid settlement funds, and that's on number one, Cass County Family Clinic Mobile Behavior Health and S U D Services.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to move this to the regular meeting in June, the request for opioid settlement funds.
Support.
Okay, I have a support and a motion on the floor. Any questions? Comments?
I just wanted to say, as chair of the opioid advisory committee, that when you, the committee sent Bob Weber and I to the National Opioid Congress last fall, and having a mobile behavioral health unit like this was one of the things that they were saying was a really innovative and effective way to serve more rural communities. And so it's really exciting to then have this proposal made to our opioid committee, because not only is it innovative, but it was showing very much that it was effective in the areas it was being used in, that we heard about at the Congress. So I just wanted to make that plug for, it's exciting that our rural community of Cass County has this opportunity. So our committee, the scores that scored this proposal unanimously supported it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And that'll be moved to the next meeting. Okay, then number two, request for opioid settlement funds. True Nar, True Nar drug testing devices for countywide use. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say again, our scores that scored this application also unanimously supported this. It's a really important tool for our law enforcement to have, and it's exactly what the opioid dollars were meant for. I know this was a reimbursement situation, but we felt it was important for this to happen, because again, this is the kind of thing the money was for.
I move that we move it forward. Second.
On the floor, we have a motion to move number two, request for opioid settlement funds and True Nar drug testing devices for countywide use. To move it forward to the next meeting. Any more questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number three, this is a proposal to establish a Cass County Ambulance Committee. I'll make that motion to establish this committee.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion on the floor in support. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, I have no questions, but I am not in favor of this. I do not believe that it is our job, the job of this board, to establish a Cass County Ambulance Committee meeting. I believe that there are a number of townships, including the village of Cassopolis and the city of Duwodja, that are involved in the ambulance situation that we have here in the county. And I think that those are the people who should be establishing the committee and figuring out what to do about the situation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to agree with Mrs. Marquetti here, or Commissioner Marquetti. We've already had, like, last year, we had a big meeting that was to discuss this, and it was aggressively turned down by several members of the community.
Well, this committee is to gather and review information related to the current ambulance service delivery models within Cass County and evaluate whether there is interest or legal pathway for future coordination for the county level. And I believe that it's important, I'm going to tell you a story. I told Tom, and do we want to go back to this? Because we have issues in Cass County with ambulance service. And you can't deny that. So the story I'm going to tell you is, is when I was a teenager back in the 60s, we had a guy that was intoxicated while driving down the road. His wife was driving, and while driving down the road, he jumped out of the truck and hit a curve sign. And so my grandma wore white clothes because she worked at a restaurant. They came and said, "We need a nurse, we need somebody here real quick, because my husband's hurt really bad." So she's, I followed my grandma out there. We went out, the guy was hurt pretty bad, he was laying there pretty bad. Did an ambulance come? No. A hearse came. The funeral director got out, he looked at the guy, he smelt booze on him, and he said, "He's not going in my hearse." Left him laying there. Cass County, or not, Barren County Police Sheriff's Department came. They had to pick him up and put him in the back of their car and get him to the hospital. That was the ambulance services that we had back in the 60s. 70s, they got a little bit better when Decatur finally got their ambulance service in the 70s. And my wife was part of the first ambulance attendants in Decatur Ambulance Service. She was a nurse. So, and I, and I looked at what we've, what's been going on here. We've had two ambulances go under, and I can't say anything more about the meetings that I've been to, to the ambulances, but I think this is an important thing. I think it needs to go forward, and I think we need to evaluate what's going on in our townships and how, maybe how we can get them together. I don't know. But if we're going to have a, an ambulance service in the future, I'm looking into the future here. Then we're going to need to start now. Not wait five years, not wait one year, not wait till the next ambulance service goes out of business. Needs to be evaluated now. So, and the scope will be to review how EMS services are currently providing across municipalities and identify service gaps or concerns reported by local units. In other words, there's going to be several people involved in this, so we can determine whether or not there is a, that we need further ambulance service in our county, which I believe we do. We got gaps. And to provide a summary of the findings and options to the Board of Commissioners. And that's what we're going to be, that's what the committee will do. They'll bring back what information they have. We'll determine everything that these folks here talked about, the legality of it and all that kind of good stuff. And the authority will be the Board of Commissioners. We would not have the authority to negotiate, implement, or formally propose any service changes without the express board approval. All findings will be returned to the full board for review and direction. That's what I feel that we need to go on, and why I feel that we need to go on further with this and establish a committee to discuss the Cass County ambulance services and what we can do in the future to provide, I'm 72 years old, when am I going to need an ambulance? Anytime. Is there going to be one available? Where I'm at, I don't know. And if there is, how long is it going to take them to get there? Where are they at? Hauling somebody to Kalamazoo? Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm a firm believer that we need this committee. I can tell you, we're not unique in Cass County. 16 other counties last year put it on a ballot for countywide EMS service in the state of Michigan alone. I can tell you, I represent LaGrange and Jefferson. They're in bargaining, they're not sure they can afford the service that's being offered right now. We're still up, there's areas in the county, it's not covered, that there is a wait time. So I, it does not hurt to put a committee together to research this and see if it's feasible for this county and how do we protect our citizens. That's what we're up here as this board, is public safety, to protect our citizens. So I'm, I believe this should move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say something concerning Commissioner Marquetti. The ambulance, the Northwest Cass Ambulance Service, there for this committee.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Okay, the ambulance authority, it's now called the Northwest Cass Ambulance Service. Covers a part of Pocagin Township, Silver Creek, Wayne, City of Duwodjak, and Blenheim Township. There for this committee. We do have their support.
Okay, I, I.
You're saying it's up to the committees?
It is. It's up to them to form their committee. It's up to them to do the proposals. It's up to them to make the plans. I was at a meeting, this is, this, this did not happen overnight. This, this happened. Those entities that use Pride Care, they knew it was coming. They knew it was coming. I sat in a county leaders' meeting, and the supervisor of Howard Township came out there. He said, "I'll help you all I can. We put the, we put an ambulance together. If I will give you any help you want, call me." No one called him. They put together SMACUS, okay? Had nothing to do with the county. This is not our job. If we, if we decide that this, that we are the ones that are going to start this committee and do this committee, then any single one of us, any one commissioner could come up and say, "Well, I think we need to establish a committee for Home for Retired Elephants." It's, it is not in our purview to be doing this. I, I agree with you. I know that you need ambulance service. And, and I'm certain that there probably is a way that you can do it, but it is not the job of the Board of Commissioners to do, to make sure that there is ambulance service throughout the county. Jefferson Township just passed a millage strictly for ambulance service of $120,000 a year. And if they can do it, then the rest, those other entities, Silver Creek, you talked about Pocagin, you talked about LaGrange, then that's what they need to do. I know that you're, you've been using SMACUS, and I know that it's been difficult, that sometimes there's not an ambulance available. And I know that when there isn't an ambulance available, those of us who have our own ambulance service are stepping up. And we have a number of times. So I am not in favor of this. And it's not, it's got nothing to do with the fact that I, I, I want everybody to have an ambulance service. But it isn't the Board of Commissioners' job to make sure that everybody has an ambulance service.
This is not the Board of Commissioners', how do I want to say it? I'm not trying to, the Board of Commissioners is not trying to take over an ambulance service. What we're trying to do is get together and with the townships. I mean, I would love to get all the townships together and say, "Okay, let's, let's get things going so we can have ambulance services." But they're not doing it. The townships are not stepping up. They're not doing it. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. I think it's really admirable that you want to get involved in this. However, when you talk about the legality of it, Michigan has a very specific structure of government, and ambulance is in the purview of the townships and cities. So it would seem like, and this is just a suggestion, we're in the process of hiring a county administrator. Us in leadership positions can offer space. We can offer to coordinate meetings. We can offer to do things like that. Maybe that would be a great assignment for your next county administrator. The problem with a committee is committees are usually established by the Board of Commissioners to carry out work that the Board of Commissioners has authority over. So I guess I'm just cautioning that you would want to be sure that you have the legal authority, because you don't have the legal authority, in my opinion, to order townships or even tell them they have to come to some meeting to discuss this topic. So it seems like this would be a better situation for diplomacy and to have somebody in a leadership role offer, "Hey, you could come meet in our beautiful new chambers. You could come and have these discussions." Because if they're not willing to come, there won't be anything accomplished. And I've been at some of those ambulance meetings. But you have to get each of the individual townships to be there. But again, if all of you think this is a good idea, that's fine. But we've got a lot of different priorities in the county. And if we can't mandate any action, it seems like it would be a good assignment for someone in a leadership role to be the facilitator, like to say, "Hey, I'll help you set up your meetings. We'll lend our marketing person to do this or that." If, if you all say that's a good idea. But it's kind of like with the opioid funds. We keep telling people, "We have all this money. We need you to apply." We can't, the committee, make people apply. We can't make them do anything. So that's just my two cents worth.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I, I'm unsure of all of the legalities. However, I work with the local townships on a regular basis, and I hear from local townships that they need help. So know that most township officials have a regular, full-time job. They don't have time to look into these things. So whether it's the Board of Commissioners, whether it's somebody else, they need somebody to lead them and help them get this done. So if it's a committee that can provide some guidance and help them, that would, that would be wonderful. But as a resident of one of the townships that doesn't have the greatest service, I would appreciate something happening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just to piggyback off your comments, Clerks, are you saying that you believe that these townships are willing to do something, just don't know which direction to take?
Yes, and I don't want to speak for Jefferson. But even though they passed a millage, that doesn't mean they have a plan.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion on the floor to establish the committee. We have support. We've had discussion. Let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup? Commissioner Barrera?
No.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Marketti?
No.
No.
And Commissioner Lee?
No.
So that's four no and four yes, so it fails.
Okay. That does not go to the next meeting. All right. And number four, purchase of two drones out of the CC debt equipment line. Item for use by all law enforcement agencies in the county and budget adjustment necessary to facilitate, facilitate purchase. Mr. Roach?
So we've been working on this for quite a few years, trying to establish the drone program for the sheriff's office. And the, the opportunity to do that right now with the CC debt equipment money is there and available. But I don't know, not only would the drones be used for police work, but also the drain commissioner could have access to it. Emergency management could have access to it. One of the drones that we're purchasing is waterproof. So a couple of weeks ago, when we had the tornado going and it was raining, we could have put the drone up right away to start looking for damage for Manny in the emergency management position. We got blockages on rivers and streams for the drain commissioner. He'll have full access to it to be able to go out over the trees and start looking at stuff. So it's going to be for the entire county to use and have access to. So it's going to be a great thing for all of us.
I learned the easy way that it's a felony to shoot those things down. So I learned that the easy way. I didn't do it, but learn from somebody else's mistake.
Any questions?
I move we move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to purchase two drones out of the CC debt money and support. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That'll move to the next meeting. Okay, and then number five, we have a request to purchase a truck for the Parks Department. Scott?
You know, I saved you. I, I was parked right there, and five minutes later, I left. And that's when that accident happened. Put your button.
Wrong place at the wrong time, story of my life. So I believe you have all the information in your pack, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. But yeah, probably four or five months ago, if you'd have been sitting right in here, you'd have heard a crash out there. And one of the vehicles that was damaged was the truck assigned to the Cass County Parks. So we're just looking to replace it.
I just moved my vehicle. I could have gotten, ah!
Yeah, thank goodness nobody, thank goodness nobody was seriously injured. So that was certainly a blessing. We're just trying to move forward and, and replace that 2019 that was damaged. So does anybody have any questions?
I move we move it forward.
Second.
I believe that.
Yes?
Question. I agree with your proposal, what you offered, and I appreciate that. Insurance coverage, it was total loss. What type of funding did we get from the insurance company on that?
So we get an actual cash value at the time. I believe it was 2019. So it's not going to be enough to cover, you know, a brand-new truck. That money is put into the motor pool fund, the check that we did get. Off the top of my head, I want to say it was about $18,000. I can get you a final number later on, to be sure. But we put that in there, and then this would be bought out of that motor pool fund. And then it's almost like a lease payment over years. That motor pool fund charges the Parks Department to reimburse that. So it will help a little bit with that balance in there. But again, it doesn't cover the entire thing.
It's a line item within my budget. It just keeps going to pay it off.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We have a motion to purchase a truck for the Parks Department. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
And number six on the list is animal control facility furnace and condenser upgrade. Do I have a motion for that? Oh, here we go.
I'm just here for questions, if you have any.
Questions?
Yeah, I move it to forward, I move to move it forward.
Second.
Okay, we have it moved to move forward and supported. Any questions? Yes, Mike?
Yes, sir. Sheriff, thank you. Is that replacing all the units out there? You know, three, four furnaces you have, or just one or two? What, what are we doing?
Ronnie? Him and Dave have been working together on this. So he has a little bit more information on it than I do. I'm pretty sure it's, it's all of them. Because they're, Dave's starting to piece them back together. He's a miracle worker when it comes to that stuff. But he's running out of options to be able to fix it.
We've had a couple of them that have already been replaced, ones that were new back in 2013, or 2012, I'm sorry. So it's going to be a majority of the furnaces. And AC units that are going to be replaced. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had three AC units down. All three were in the kennel units. And as you can tell by the humidity levels today, it was pretty ugly in there. So Dave's been a great help in keeping these things pieced together. But when you have a small condenser motor that costs more than the original cost of the purchase of the, the original furnace, we definitely need to start looking at getting these things replaced.
So how many units are you replacing?
Is it six? Okay, we have six. So it's the oldest, all the ones from the original portion of the building from '96. And then there are a couple that may be looked at later on down the road in new sections.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion to purchase, actually, you're going to get quotes, right?
You got quotes.
Got quotes. Okay.
They're in.
To purchase furnace and condenser upgrades. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll move that forward to the next meeting.
I have a question for the sheriff and the animal control director. Would, is that an emergent need to where we can put it on our special meeting Thursday? Or can it wait till the next commissioner meeting? What do you think?
As long as Dave can keep them together, they can go to the next meeting.
And in the meantime, between now and next Thursday, if something goes terribly wrong, we can add that to our agenda and get it done quicker, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have, number seven, sheriff's office parking lot repaving to be completed by Cass County Road Commission. Yes, sir. Any questions?
Questions?
All right. Well, I have a motion to move it forward and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That'll be moved to the next meeting. And the law and courts building carpet replacement. We've looked at the cost of that.
I move to move that forward. Support.
Okay, we have movement to replace the carpet in law courts building. We have support. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just want to talk on this. Well, item six, seven, and eight, when we're talking about the furnace and condenser, we're talking about the repaving, we're talking about the carpet replacement. All those items were brought forward to the Capitol, Capitol Committee. Just want to let you guys know that apparently, you know, we have funding for this. We have budgeted for these items. Dave just done a phenomenal job. Even the, looking at the carpet replacement, the diagram that was done on the areas that are most impacted. This is very well thought out. I look forward to doing more improvements like this as long as we continue to budget for it. So I'm definitely in favor of all these improvements.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The carpet replacement, we move to the next meeting. Budget adjustments. I'll need a motion for the budget.
As business as usual, I'll move it forward.
Okay, business as usual. I have a motion on the floor and support. Any questions on budget adjustments?
Mr. Chair, yes, I, I do have a question. The very last one, the new courthouse utilities. Okay, so now, okay, so utilities, we're talking gas, electricity, water?
The majority of it that I'm, I'm looking at, when I was looking at that was the electricity.
Electricity?
Yeah, and so adding on to this building, we had no idea what those monthly costs were going to be when we were at budget time last year. And, and that's just because I just don't know where we're going to land and electricity costs are high. So once it's in there, I can kind of move it around between any other buildings that might be a little low, too. And that's actually an area where we went a little over last year. So I was just trying to be very cautious. And I'd rather do it now rather than getting a whole bunch at the very end of the year. So as I saw that it's trending pretty high and that we didn't have those numbers last year, I thought I'd go ahead and get it in now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll move budget adjustments to the next meeting. Michigan Works Memorandum of Agreement.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we bring this forward to the regular meeting.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and support. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to speak a little bit. So there's been a question about Michigan Works and them being present in the building. A lot of people are getting questions. They assured me with this larger space that they want to keep it occupied Monday through Friday. They will also bring in rehabilitation services to be in there with them. So we are hoping that it's staffed more on top of, they'll be moving from a smaller office area to a larger one. And it will also increase our revenues a little bit to help offset some of those costs over in the annex. So it's providing more services to our residents in our building and helping revenue a little bit.
Good. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll move that memorandum agreement to the next meeting. Number 11, the MERS DC Plan Amendment and those proposed changes for non-union employees hired on or after July 1st, 2025.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I move that we move this forward to the June regular meeting. And I'll wait for the second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and support. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank Jennifer and whoever else worked on this, because this, it looks very good.
All the elected officials, and I worked very closely on this.
Thank you.
Tried to communicate well and make sure that it wasn't affecting any of our current employees right now and gives us some time to plan ahead so we know what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll move this MERS DC Plan Amendment to the next meeting. All right, we're down to public comment. Limit to three minutes per person. Any public comment?
I just wanted to let the board know that the teaser purchase that we did for the countywide group for the $99,000, we did write a RAP grant for that through MMRMA, and we did receive that grant for $49,900 today. So we've recouped half of that money through the insurance company. So just want to make sure you're aware.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
We also got news, that IT also got their grant from MMRMA. So very excited about that.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other public comment? Hearing none. We have no closed session. Board member comments and announcements. And we'll start with Mr. Grace. Mr. Northrup? Mr. Jones?
Just remember, next Thursday is our special meeting. We'll send out a reminder probably Wednesday.
Reminder is a good idea. No comments here? Tom?
Yes, I would like to thank all the advocates and the chaplain that showed up today for the special, the conservator's unit.
Roseanne?
Yes.
Done.
Oh. We'll shut you off right now.
Mercy's sake, aren't you?
But you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Because it is all volunteer and a lot of people that we run into, the family members, they are really surprised that it is volunteer. And they're very thankful that we do show them.
Okay, all right. I would like to say, thank you to Jim Lawrence. And I so appreciate your passion, Jim. You have been on this and on this for the two years that I know about. But I do want to say this to you, there are some people in this county who know how to get things done.
Okay, all right.
And you need to find them.
I'm going to hold you to that.
You need to find them, because it is important. And I appreciate Commissioner Grace's comments and Al's and our clerk, and I know it's needed. I know it's needed, and I think that, as I said before, I think we need to talk to the supervisor of Howard Township and see how he did it. That's all for me.
Thank you. I do have his card, by the way, and I was going to talk to him.
I just got to say, remember, the farmers are running right now, so be patient and share the road with them. That's all I got.
Okay. Anyone for adjournment?
Yes.
Needing adjourn.
Thank you, sir.